And there's no way that I'm gonna try to replace you guys and get in your seats because I know that there's 2,000 people in our town that know better than you at times. And I want to encourage you guys. The Bible says that we can find joy in those places. You know, one of the things that he uses, James talks about, he says, whenever you face trials, and he says, of many kind. And the word many kind in the Greek actually means polka dots. So imagine that, that we're constantly faced with polka dots, troubles of all shapes, all sizes, and all kinds. And then it says, consider, pure joy in the Greek word for consider is simply this, it just simply means that we're to count, consider, but we're to layer it. In other words, James is saying, it's okay to feel angry, it's okay to feel upset, it's okay to feel frustrated, those are just normal emotions. But make sure joy is on top of them, that everything else falls below them. And when you do that, which happens is you're able to see life and see the struggles will be different, you're able to have this testing of your faith. So I want to encourage you guys. James is probably the most powerful book in the Bible. And what you have to understand about James is during the season, everybody's being persecuted, run out of their cities, run out of their neighborhoods, run out of their homes, husbands and wives. Stephen had just been stoned in Jerusalem, and everybody's taken off and being persecuted, and they're running everywhere. And James says, hey, consider it all joy. You know, and James himself was a martyr. He died being pushed out of the top window of the temple in Jerusalem. He didn't actually die then, they realized he was still alive, they ran down, they took clubs, they beat him, and then threw stones at him. He's the same guy that said, hey, consider all that joy too. I'm glad we live in a country where none of that takes place, aren't you? That's not normal for us. But James, who experienced all kinds of persecution, I think he's an expert, and I think he's the kind of guy that says, consider it joy. So if y'all go through whatever polka dots you're faced with, whatever trials y'all walk through, there's still joy in the middle of all that. So can I pray for you guys? Father, thank you that you love us so well. Thank you that you have a plan for us, thank you that you're with us. And Father, I pray for wisdom tonight. Thank you that in every trial, sometimes we're in a season of difficulties, sometimes we're in an easier trial, but all of us facing trials at some point in some way in our lives. Some of those trials are personal, so those trials are related to the positions that we carry. Because we all carry trials, we all are facing trials in our lives. Father, I thank you, Lord, that you have given us, through your son Christ, the ability to have all joy in the middle of all of that. Father, I pray that we will learn how to place joy above all the other emotions, all the other feelings, all the other things that we're faced with. When we look through the glass in the window, God, we will see joy above everything else. Give us the strength to do that. Father, we thank you that James was an example of somebody who lived in joy, even though he was persecuted, and even though he was executed, and he was a martyr for his faith. Father, I pray that we will take a strong stand for our convictions and for the things that we believe in, God. And Father, I pray that we will have faith in you, knowing that in these trials, in these tests, God, you are teaching us to walk in perseverance and in faith. In the name of Jesus. Father, I pray for blessing over this meeting, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kelly, call the roll.
Calvert.
Here.
Wilkerson.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Brown.
First item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt your agenda.
Second.
Motion, a second to adopt your agenda. All in favor? Say aye, please. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the safety of the well and loan fund additional loan. This is the public hearing to allow questions or comments from the audience in regards to the loan that we've been approved for, for the additional amounts for the sewer plant. $1,945,450 from, for the wastewater treatment plant, which will cover the contingency cost. And as for those additional costs, only a small portion of this has been allocated at this time. So what we do not use, you go back, and we won't have to pay the interest or whatnot into the loan. And we've been approved for the loan, we don't have to raise the rates an additional amount, it's not in the letter, but the requirement to receive the loan was 2.74. And we did have a budget time, so those additional expenses were covered. And when we did the initial loan, this meeting was covered in a special meeting during today. And so, it was accepted, we had this part back, it did not come off, which we, if I did it in a public hearing fashion. So unless anybody is here to state or ask questions about this, if anybody has any questions, I will close the public hearing. If anybody have any comments or anything? We want to know. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the budget amendment. The second reading of the ordinance, 082022-1. Is anyone here to speak for the public hearing for the second reading of the budget? If nobody doesn't have any comments to speak to the budget amendment, I will close the public hearing on the budget amendment. Next item on the agenda is public comments. We didn't play out a sheet of public comments.
The second reading.
Yeah, we have asked the second reading, Lord.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess we did. I'm sorry.
Okay.
The second reading of the ordinance, 082022-1.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance 0082022-1, second reading. A second motion.
Motion, a second. Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Any comments?
Oh, yes.
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't, of course, I'll have some questions. In the budget, in, I know we're, increased appropriations, where is that coming from for the police department salary?
It's coming from fund balance.
Okay, and so is the code payable?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry, I wanted to make sure I was seeing that right.
Is there any other questions or comments on regarding the budget amendment?
That $20,000 that was left over in last year's budget, your budget from last year, right? You thought was carrying forward, and it didn't, so it's, we're just moving that back into.
It's extra $43,000, it's one of the police department, it's one of the one that got one and come over.
Okay.
A portion of it, that would kind of go under the police department.
Anybody else say anything? Okay. Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries on the second reading of the budget. Now, public comments. I volunteer for public comments. Next item on the agenda is the minutes for the 1822.
How long have we heard the minutes from August 1822 here for me?
My second.
Motion, a second. The present minutes. Boss member, say aye, please.
Can I discuss it?
Yes.
The motion to promote or give fire measures.
Thank you.
To give him a interim sergeant with a $2 pay. I express a conflict of interest, and I don't, I didn't mean.
I agree.
Yes, it is, it's on the.
On the next page.
Okay, I didn't go for.
I agree. Okay, there you go. Anybody else have any comments about the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Next item is the August 2022 financial statement. Ms. Keisha provided some notes, the financial statement. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement for August.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the August financial statement. Does anybody have any comments?
I've just a question, a couple of questions here of the police department, TBI, municipal service. Six thousand for $2,000, we must pay for it.
That's on the notes section. They sent us a deal for the time period after we disconnected the line. And Meredith wasn't aware that we didn't even pay it, and she went ahead and paid it. So Chief Jolly has reached out to business about getting that reimbursed, because we should have to pay her love, because we don't have the line anymore. So we're just fully.
And we're leaving the paving on the building in there for a reason, right?
Yes, because we were gonna use that, or re-get the loan to redo the building back here.
That wasn't enough for it.
That was not a benefit, that was discussed here in budget.
Yep.
So that was just for when we get that new loan, we'll already have the money.
Then one more question on page eight, make sure they have the notes. I don't think it is, but we've, we've pledged to. For truck repair, $22,347 for August.
Yes. That includes the old dump truck, also the salt truck, so that's the repairs on the end.
All right. Anybody have any questions? We already got the motion, a second. All in favor of approving the financial statement?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're in the old business, approve the change order for the wastewater treatment plant. As per the request at the works thirty, I spoke with GMC about this, and Lovey has agreed to lay the fee for the engineering of the parking lot, which will allow us to have engineered per code specifications and for the access of our equipment, and give us a specific price to be able to approve an additional change order once we have it engineered. I'd like for us to have a motion to that effect, so we can have it put in the minutes that they're agreeing to lay the fee and design to our specifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order to the sewer plant for the engineering of the parking lot, with the understanding that GMC is withdrawing all of their engineering fees for that project, for this change order.
I'll second you. Motion, a second. Discussion?
I did notice on the map, or the engineering drawing here, there were some notes about, what was it? It looked like that they were moving a fence or something like that. I just wasn't sure how old this was, if it bears.
There's a fence that's supposed to be along the edge of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Which will be moved further that direction, depending on the parking lot.
Oh, okay, and that has to do with it being paved, is that?
Yes, it will be in the way of the, for love, of our engine behind the building.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's what these notes are about, increasing the width and all that type of stuff, it's all.
All for that purpose. When I spoke to Lovey about this, we want to get with Park Chief Jenkins to make sure that his specifications are on the code in the engineering to have industrial requirements. So that map should take care of it. WNO will receive the engineer drawing and be able to get a more specific price on the cost, because y'all were concerned that that cost was really high, so.
Well, and that would also include this, this paving schedule here, I guess, depending on how, I'm guessing how thick it is.
Yes, I don't think it's apparent on this chart that he's recommending.
The heavy duty?
Yes. I think that resolving that issue, we go this route.
Because of the heavy trucks coming through.
Yes. Anybody have any questions about that? Ms. Kelly, call the roll on the approval for the change order for the wastewater treatment plant.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approve of the change order for the wastewater treatment plant security system. This is a little different. I brought this forward because it was something that wasn't included in the design. It's not required to be done, but if we do this, it will be included in the loan cost, opposed to having to do it later day. On GMC's proposal of $1,838, he says he doesn't expect their fee to be that much. He said like $500 to $600 potentially, but the additional cost is all material related cost for the nature conduit, and it's not an absorbed amount just for their engineering or their handling of the, of the installation of the security system, basically. It's all materially related, and right now is the time that there need to do that work at the new plant. I think it's a good price, because I, we've talked about security systems in some other places, and they were really crazy high compared to this one. So this will allow WNO to contract with Prevence to install the system as quoted here for $12,400. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to approve the change order for the sewer plant as security system.
A second.
Motion, a second. Does anybody have any comments?
Load, would load through your rhythm?
No, I think this is an additional request that wasn't necessarily his fault, and it was just not something they overlooked, and not just the basic touchpad, alarm, the cameras, everything.
It's a whole thing required for a sewer plant's launch.
Not a dislette maybe, not the security system. It's not something that was omitted from the design, or say, just not requested to be included in the original cost. Initially, the cost was, would be, you know, for WNO, I thought that was kind of high, but they're going to install the conduit, that if we did this after the loan.
And we gotta get some.
We would be having to pay Prevence that additional cost. Yeah, so I think it's a fair deal, in the United States. Have a motion, a second. Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is under new business, the selection of ARPA, the ARPA Rescue Act grant administrator. We just submitted for countywide collaborative water project for the phase one, and we used Ms. Kim Ark, the county grant writer administrator of the grant, for the requirements of the grant. And the phase two will be supplemental, additional monies outside the collaborative project, and we're required to have a grant administrator, and I sent out requests, proposals from, to some people that, Hugh Co. David recommended that we send it to, and the lady from grassroots planning, Ms. Amanda.
Maynard.
Maynard is the only person that responded to the request.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
And her proposal there meets all the requirements to qualify for the grant. It will include the administration of the grant after we receive the grant, and per the grant guidelines, it's 6% of the grant total, and in this case, we're talking the total grant, right around $200,000. If it was more than that, her, required her fee would be much less than 6%. So with the amount of work, the big volume, the time, the big volume, the administration of this, the guideline, her proposal of 6% is acceptable, and that's kind of nailing down the cost there. And I talked to her, I'll have some meetings with her, Brian Griffin and I are gonna meet with her about her thing, and she seems very knowledgeable about the process when you go along, there's crazy complexity, and she represents several cities across Milton City and across, so, you know, I think it applies, and it will be using those grant, those potential grant procedures that we're gonna pay for, it's not gonna be something that come out of our fund or our budget at a later time. Now, approve the motion to approve Ms. Amanda's idea for grassroots planning as a consultant.
Not second. Are we, is this the only one that we got that?
It's the only one that we've received.
Okay.
What's it called grassroots?
Planning and consulting.
So this will be our discussion portion of this time, so, if anybody has any question about it, she will be at the next meeting to discuss this, because this process will start in, in phase two, and as we all have some good agreements with our portion of the match for the county project group, so that'll kick off, I'm very excited.
So this is, this is for a separate pool of money, not the 700 and so much thousand that we got for the first half of, in October, or November last year, right?
It's for additional ones. Anybody have any question? Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to authorize Chief Jolly to purchase a code vehicle.
I'll make a motion, a second.
We have no one there.
I think it's in the budget, man.
That was the $20,000 that was.
You, well, let's get into the discussion portion, we're in the discussion portion. Do you have a specific vehicle in mind at this time?
I wanted, I needed to know that we've got it available, because they go so fast, if I find one, we're gonna be gone.
In the motion, do we need to have the dollar amount that we're approving for him to spend for the code vehicle?
You could try not to exceed the amount in there, I suppose. Add into my motion not to exceed, exceed $20,000.
Motion, a second to authorize Chief Jolly to purchase a code vehicle not to exceed $20,000. Any more discussion? Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve a 50 cent per hour raise for Sergeant Whitty. We talked about, is that the work study? You want to cover that, Ms. Chandler?
Yeah, we, I realize that the city, it's hard for us to implement an incremental thing like 10 years, 10 years, you get the raise and all that, but we don't know for year to year, what that's gonna be. So what I'm trying to do is I've implemented evaluations, and depending on what the mission looks like, if an officer has been, they celebrate their year anniversary, they get the evaluation, then I'm gonna come to you all and just present each one and say, hey, this person's been here for 30 years, I'd like to give them a 50 cent raise, because what we're looking at is, we've got Sergeant Whitty, she's been a sergeant for three years, and when you all agreed, approved promoting Sergeant Rubich now, she's making the same as him. So if we can do like 50 cents a year, by the way, you've got an officer doing it for three years, or he might need to make a dollar and 50 cents more hours, and a brand new one, kind of make it a little more fair.
I make a motion to approve the raises.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the raises. If I have any more discussion, or more questions?
We've been had there, that's the same.
Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to approve resolution R092022-1, resolution to apply for the safety partners grant. Ms. Keisha, discussed that.
I make a motion to pass the resolution, R92022-1.
Second.
Motion, a second to apply for the safety partners grant. If I have any questions, or, we applaud for this every year, it's basically a form out, a form out, we can pass the resolution. Ms. Kelly, call the roll, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. The last item on the agenda is to approve the mayor's mileage. Something I wanted to point out to everyone is, GRC did not have any meetings in July, and neither did some of the county, or whatever, meetings turning in in July.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the mayor's mileage.
Second.
All right, so you all would make your statements. Or safety dollars, make two cents.
Motion, a second, to approve my mileage. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Kelly, call the roll.
Calvert.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries. The other items on the agenda, is it done?
I saw boo, and just not.